All right, well, good evening. Welcome to the May 10 Edina Planning Commission. So, you know, somebody just ran out to get water. But you can, when you start the roll call and we can...
Commissioner Lee. Here. Commissioner Joe.
Here.
Commissioner Nemroth.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
Commissioner Bluey.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
I'm... Ba-ba-ba-ba-ba. Here he comes. It's not an easy door.
And Commissioner Strzok.
Yes, here.
Okay, so tonight what we're, we've been asked to move the article... Thank you. Seven, from Reports and Recommendations: Consideration of a Zoning Ordinance Amendment Regarding Temporary Healthcare Dwellings, to the front of the agenda before the public hearing for the variance request for Edina Public Schools. So we have that amendment request. Anyone have any other requests for changes to the agenda? No? Anyone?
Just have some items for the small area plan process.
Okay. To understaff comments? I mean, Chair and member comments?
Yep.
Okay. Wonderful. Anything else? Do we have a motion to amend the art in the agenda?
So move.
Thank you.
For a second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you. So next on the agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from April 26. And I believe, Jackie, that you sent out the revised ones with...
Yes.
Commissioner Nemroth's amendments.
I see.
Okay. Were there any other changes to the minutes? Anyone had? No? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
I move that we accept the minutes.
For a second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. All right, so we're going to have now the consideration of the zoning ordinance amendment regarding temporary healthcare dwellings.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission, and thank you for moving this item up. Members of the Health Commission had some very late nights here with the City Council with the tobacco ordinance and appreciate being moved up to the front this evening. So this item is just for discussion. You recall back in 2016, the city opted out of the state statute that would allow temporary healthcare dwelling units in the city. At that time, however, the City Council asked the Planning Commission, as well as the Health Commission, to consider it further, take a look at it, maybe customize it for Edina. And that was put on both of our commissions' work plans. So staff has attempted to provide a draft of an ordinance that would allow those types of uses. So that's the purpose of the discussion this evening, have some discussion on potential changes to the code as it's drafted this evening. And then bring, once we've generally agreed on some of those things, I would bring a draft back to the Planning Commission to hold a public hearing, and then we would send a recommendation on to the City Council. So the ordinance that is here before you, essentially it adopts the state statute but does make some changes to a few of the provisions that were required in the state statute. And I'll just go through some of those changes and then we can just have the discussion. Jeff Brown, the staff liaison, is here and will introduce the members of the commission that are here with us. So first, it is a change... The state statute does not require these temporary structures to be anchored to the ground, essentially a structure on wheels that's moved in. Our building official had some safety concerns about what would happen in the instance of a tornado or some strong winds. Those would easily be blown over. So we're suggesting that they would have to somehow temporarily anchor them to the ground. We are also suggesting that a building permit is required, subject to the state building Another requirement is that these structures have to meet all minimum zoning ordinance requirements. That's required setback, lot coverage, which could be a concern. And it also does not require a survey. So the ordinance before you requires a survey. That's something that we could discuss. There is quite a bit of an expense to go through in providing a survey, can be timely in getting those put together. Members of the Planning Commission who have done projects recently, I think, could attest to that. So we might want to talk about, well, maybe that a site plan would be acceptable, especially since these are temporary in nature. In regard to, if we did require them to meet all required setbacks, we have a lot of 40 and 50-foot wide lots in town, and many of those property owners just wouldn't be able to meet a front yard setback requirement. They wouldn't be able to get that unit into their rear yard, being with the homes close on each side if they have five-foot setbacks on both sides. So we may want to consider an exemption to front yard setbacks. I might suggest we have at least a side and rear setback, maybe five or 10 feet, to at least pull it away from adjacent property. But then, but consider that exemption for a front yard setback. The same would be said for lot coverage. Many of our smaller lots, they are maxed out in terms of lot coverage, so we might want to consider an exemption to that in promoting these types of structures as well. The state law also requires that these structures can be located on property for no longer than one year. Staff had some concern with if somebody had one of those structures, they're still using it, maintaining it, we would have a hard time kicking them out after one year. So we're suggesting a two-year maximum. Permits would need to be reviewed and extended each six months, so there is some review process in regard to extending that time. Also, the fee required by state statute is $100, and we're suggesting a $400 fee to cover staff time. There'll be quite a bit of, a lot of staff involvement, from planning staff, building staff, fire, emergency, safety as well. So with that, I will stop there and maybe I'll introduce Jeff Brown.
Is this on? Okay. Hi, I'm Jeff Brown. I'm the staff liaison to the Community Health Commission. With me tonight are members Greg Wright, Kristi Zilka, and Andrew Johnson Cowley. I'm just going to try to summarize some of the Health Commission's, I guess, viewpoints. Carrie covered most of them. Pretty much, the Health Commission has been discussing this since last fall, as it was put on the work plan, in addition to the Tobacco 21 ordinance. And very much is a proponent of the general concept of these temporary family healthcare dwellings and allowing them in the city. Basically, as far as what Carrie mentioned about the survey requirement, that was one of the big concerns about timeliness, because of, a survey might take some time, it might delay the potential use of these units. They would endorse the use of a site plan. They also agree with the lot coverage requirements, looking at something about exempting those if this, these are to be, not promoted so much, but if we're to encourage the use of the units. They're positive on the two-year change and really see these as a potential, the potential for adding value to this, to a resident far outweighs the potential, I guess, cons, if you would. So those are mostly the concerns of the commission. There's a few language things in the statute that we would look at. One of the items, let's see, mentions vehicles, access to the rear yard, and we may have to reword it. It was one of the things, but I think we would, we would talk about that. So really, that's the, the opinion of the commission is kind of in line with what I think your recommendation was to the council previously, with some minor edits that have been addressed in the amendments. So that's pretty much it. Any of you want to say a word or two? No? So...
Open it up for discussion, questions, thoughts?
Okay. Anyone? Commissioner Bennett.
Perhaps, because I don't know too much about this, but could you speak to the use of these units and, I guess, the purpose of extending it from one to two years? And just so we can kind of understand why that's necessary?
Sure. So in Minnesota, we have winter. And in a situation where someone would, would bring a unit on-site in February and then had the intention of using it for nine months, you know, if it was end-of-life care or something like that, and, but that didn't happen, and someone needs to stay there longer. If we limit it to a year, and in, on February 14th, that's 365 days, and we get a call from a neighbor and they say, hey, this has been here a year, someone has to go out and enforce that. And I don't think we want to be in the business of taking someone out of their, their unit if they still need it. So that was the idea of extending it longer than, than the state minimums. And I think we would obviously have some allowance for continuance if necessary, but that's the concern with something like that, because if you look at it black and white, that's a pretty harsh stopping point.
Hi, Greg Wright. One other point that I can add, as a physician, we are notoriously poor at predicting how much time a person may have left in a terminal illness, or how long a disability may last before that person recovers to the point of no longer needing this dwelling. With a one-year limit, I think the odds are much higher that you'll run into the problem of having to evict a person who is still either disabled or literally terminal. With two years, I think the gross inaccuracies of my profession are smoothed out to the point that you wouldn't run into that problem very often.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Guess? Could you take a guess and let us know? Are we talking about this will happen twice a year in Edina, or are we going to have 8,000 of them?
I think it's more likely the twice a year at most. I really don't know. We would be one of, or the only, maybe, cities to allow them. I don't anticipate it being a flood. I would, I would think once every couple of years, maybe. So I don't think it's, I don't think it would be a big impact.
And, and since these come up every six months for review, if we build a house and provide a variance for it, we never see that again. We have to learn to live with whatever error we might make in granting that variance.
Right.
But with this, it has a fixed sunset.
Right.
And we see it every six months. So, and we're talking about two in a city of, how many thousand? 30,000 houses?
Right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Nemroth.
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you to the Community Health Commission. In my life experience, my non-scientific observation is that when people say, well, let's turn this, let's not do this now, and, you know, and we'll do something, we'll think about it and do something better later, that, that rarely happens. Rarely does anyone ever come up and do something better later. And I think it's really outstanding that the Community Health Commission actually did come up with something later that is probably better than what the state plan was. So I'm, I'm really impressed and really grateful that you did this. My question is, how, I'll be back up, my, to set up my question, is my concern in this kind of situation is, is the user need, is a user profile of who will actually use this? And I'm imagining, for example, in my head, it's people who have elderly parents, and they're, they have jobs, they may have kids, and their parents all of a sudden have a broken hip or some sudden health issue, and, and they're running around, dealing with their jobs, dealing with their kids, now they're dealing with their parents' doctors, their parents' medical care, they're finding a rehab facility. They're, they're booked. Their brains and their schedules are booked. And so the one, one concern I have is that something like this is, is easy for these people to do. They're, they're in an emergency, or they're in kind of a personal crisis, they want something, they want the city to be easy for them. Can you discuss kind of the process and how much would be involved for the people to actually get this? Hopefully, it's only to help them out of a sudden crisis, they don't have to go around looking at various rehab facilities or temporary nursing homes for their parents and trying to match culture and availability, and they can just get something and take them out of their crisis in a hurry. How, how easy will this be for people to actually get done?
Yeah, that was a discussion we had often at the Community Health Commission, and that's why we talked about the survey being a bit of an onerous thing, maybe, and trying to streamline it as much as possible. We talked about expedited building permit process, because now when you go into a building, you get put in a queue, and when your item gets reviewed, that's when it gets reviewed. So we would have to have a discussion with the building official about, you know, for the one we get each year, can we, can we put these to the front? Something like that. I mean, staff, we would have to discuss that and sort that out. We'd have to have some kind of application. I mean, there are a lot of requirements for physician statements and the actual condition that someone's in. So it is, it is a particular application process, and that's the state statute part. That's nothing that, that we added as a city. So it's very specific, but if, if we can have a thorough application and people complete it very thoroughly, and we get the building permit process expedited, it should go pretty smoothly.
How much time do you think it would take the average person to come, you know, perhaps who has not done a building application with the city before? How long do you think it would take someone?
You know, that's a good question. I, I don't know. I think it depends on their, you know, if they can get the, their physician to provide this, I think, do they call it an affidavit? Written certification they have to get from their physician. So there are some, and they have to get a contract for septic management from, you know, a septic provider. So there are some homework steps that they would need to do prior. But if they do all those, the process of an application here and a building permit should go, you know, pretty smoothly. But I, I just don't know the answer to that.
Okay, well, thank you. I mean, we, we can't make it, we can't make it like coming in and filling out a, you know, signing and your name on a piece of paper, obviously.
Right.
So it sounds like you've given a lot of thought to it, and hopefully, as Mr. Commissioner Hamilton said, hopefully, we're going to learn by doing this twice, or a handful of times, probably.
Yep, I agree. I think, I think that it's a learning process, and if we have to make some adjustments and to make it, you know, the barriers less or more, you know, we can make those adjustments.
Well, thank you for everything you've done. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner, go for it.
So my comment in general is putting things in the front, front yard of a house. We have some of the most restrictive rules about parking boats, RVs, trailers. None of that is allowed for more than seven days in the city to be done. And that's been that way since the beginning of time, as far as I know. So I, with pause, talk about doing anything in the front of the house, because that imposes a huge externality on your neighbors, where they, you know, what you do in your backyard is kind of what you do in your backyard. But I think when you put something, a structure in the front of your yard, it negatively affects your neighbors. Now, whether it's a good thing on a moral basis or a bad thing on a moral basis, I'm not, I'm, you know, that's not my argument. But that is imposing a huge cost, a penalty on your neighbors to have. And I'm thinking of my neighborhood, which is entirely non-conforming, tiny little 60-foot lots, to put a big structure in the middle of my yard, you know, has effectively imposed that cost upon all my neighbors. Not saying you shouldn't do it, but I think we really need to be thoughtful about how you solve that front yard issue. And I know it's an, it's an issue. Maybe it's a conditional use permit of some sort, I don't know. But I think we need to be thoughtful just about how the front yard's approached. And I, I agree with everything else, but I'm one of those going through, trying to get a survey down on a property, it doesn't get done fast. And all that's, I, you know, I think that's, that's all very reasonable and smart. I just struggle with how to handle the front yard and what that does to the, you know, your neighbors.
Anyone else?
Yes. May I bring up one other point? In the state statute, there's a minimum requirement of insulation to R-15. Leading cause of death amongst frail elderly people is hypothermia, and R-15 insulation in Minnesota doesn't seem adequate to me. And I would leave it up to the building people and to you to decide if that R-15 requirement is safe enough for a resident of Edina, or whether you'd want to modify that as well.
Wait, is, is not the accessory dwelling unit for the caregiver, or did you just imply that it was the elderly person that would be in the unit?
Yes. I mean, in, in the event that there's an elderly, frail, perhaps terminally ill person, hypothermia is a serious risk in, in the wintertime in the northern states.
Yes, but my understanding is these, these are units are for caregivers. Is that not right?
No, they're for the person.
Okay. Is, is that, is that defined? That that is, is the ill person who is in the temporary, it's not for a caregiver? Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's defined under Section 3, subdivision 2. Wait, Section 3F? Is that where it's defined? Check.
If, if item, which one is it? The one that requires that meet all the building code requirements? That would not be an R-15 in Minnesota. If it were to meet all the building code requirements, you would have a very tight little building there. I don't think you'd have to worry about that, but the issue is, is it has to meet all the Minnesota building code requirements. And the building code requirements are going to cover insulation, but it's also going to cover, your anchors are going to be four feet below ground. You're going to be below frost for anchors. You're doing a lot of work here for something that may be there for six months. And I really wonder if it might not make sense just to say, well, if this is good enough for the state of Minnesota, would it not be good enough for Edina for, to at least try one time and find out how it works? And at most, it will be there for six months with whatever we approve and go from there?
So you're saying that to not accept any of these amendments that they're...
Well, I wanted to ask the question about those amendments. I, you know, if you really are going to apply it to Minnesota's building code, you're going to have a, you're going to have a well-insulated little building. And I don't dispute that. We're not talking about putting fish houses out here.
Right.
We're, this is, this is going to be a solid little, little structure, but it's also going to be required to be anchored to frost. And a host of other things that are going to take time, effort, energy, and money. The, my issue wouldn't be on the, on the hypothermia in the unit. If it's only insulated to an R-15, it would be things like mold and mildew and condensation, which I think would be a huge problem if you don't, but...
Commissioner Lee.
Okay, are we just restricting our questions now to the Health, Health Commission, or is our discussion taking place right now for us?
Yeah.
We can discuss. Okay. So I have a question for Commissioner Hamilton. Can you help me understand, what, what is the definition of a dwelling unit? Is, is this just a room? Does it have plumbing? Is it hooked to a septic tank?
It has to be connected to utilities.
Okay.
It says that in here. That's the only reason I know.
All right, so if that's the case, then it, it could have a bathroom, but it's not required to have one? It is required. It is required to have a bathroom. So it'd be like a bedroom with a bathroom, attached bathroom? Cooking facilities? No, kitchen?
Can I ask, as I view this, this is like a small apartment home. Is that, is that a fair way to look at it?
300 square feet. And what other communities, do we know what other communities in, in our immediate metro area have, have endorsed this? Carrie, do you know? I'm not aware of any. I believe they've all opted out. Okay. All right. Thanks.
Commissioner Bennett.
I just, I think some of us struggle as to, you know, who is going to be in these facilities and how they get there. And I think with all these stringent codes, I imagine that this, there's going to be a company or something like, that makes tiny houses that you deploy these. So how can we make that easier for those to exist there? So do we have opportunities for different foundation items? When we say anchor, I mean, that's a loose term, so what do we accept as anchoring? I mean, do you put two piers down and chain this on four corners? I mean, what's acceptable? Because it's a mobile unit and we're, we're, we're changing what the provision is? So I think we just need to be cautious as to our terminology, and what we want to see is, you know, if there's trip hazards and other things that come with that for neighbors or residents, but just be aware of what, I mean, what does it mean anchored? Or we put in a temporary foundation down and then it's attached to it? Just putting that out there.
Yeah, that would be at the, at the discretion of the building official, and he was comfortable with this, with this language. So I don't know exactly what that looks like, how it's anchored, but...
The fact that it's licensed by an engineer is making him comfortable, making them comfortable.
The anchoring would be required to be... The anchoring plan would be done by a licensed engineer.
Licensed engineer. It's under the ordinance.
Is, is the anchoring, as I understand it, the anchoring isn't necessarily defined by the mechanics of it, but, but by the purpose of it? In other, in other words, to avoid the, the unit being blown away in high winds or tornado? Is that kind of the, the litmus test for a good anchor?
I believe that's correct, yep.
I just have a question. So I'm reading this page. Is this what we're proposing, or is this what? Because this has some items in here, I thought you were saying to not have, that you had...
Yes.
Okay.
So that page that you held up, that would be the ordinance amendment. It, in effect, it adopts the state building code, or the, the state statute regarding these structures. But then the, the six items, those would be unique to Edina.
The, the six highlighted?
Correct. And the way it's written now, we would require a survey.
Right.
All building setbacks would be met, so that, that's why I highlighted that for discussion. Do we want to provide those exceptions? The draft before you does not.
Okay.
So I'll speak a little bit to the front yard discussion. That was the main, one of the main discussion points that we had at multiple meetings. And kind of the consensus that came to on Monday night was the, the positive and the value potential for someone that needs this unit would, would out, if you want to say outweigh, or could be more than the potential aesthetic loss for a neighbor. So that, that was the commission, the commission's kind of opinion on that. I know that's...
It, in effect, it adopts the state building code or the, the state statute regarding these structures. But then the, the six items, those would be unique to Edina.
The six highlighted?
Correct. And the way it's written now, we would require a survey.
Right.
All building setbacks would be met. So that's why I highlighted that for discussion. Do we want to provide those exceptions? The draft before you does not.
Okay.
So I'll speak a little bit to the front yard discussion. That was the main, one of the main discussion points that we had at multiple meetings. And kind of the consensus that came to on Monday night was the, the positive and the value potential for someone that needs this unit would, would out, if you want to say outweigh or could be more than the potential aesthetic loss for a neighbor. So that was the commission, the commission's kind of opinion on that. I know that's controversial maybe, but that was kind of the, the result that they came to.
Right. So in response to that, so is there a way that we can have it so the neighbors are notified? Or is that part of this and I'm missing it? And you could get approval or, you know, support? At least let them know that this is happening and allow them an opportunity to...
Well, if they have to follow setbacks, you're going to be hard pressed to get anything in the front yard.
Right, I stopped saying if we went with the exception to allow them within...
I mean, that's why I was, think about conditional use permit, though it adds a step to it. That would kind of give you...
Or variance, yeah. I don't know, Carrie, do you think that that would help appease some of these concerns?
A conditional use permit, it is permitted under, under specific conditions. But if we can get those conditions written into code, a conditional use permit would be quite a lengthy process. It would probably, it would be between two to four months, two to three months to go through the full planning commission review and recommendation, and then it would go to city council. The idea here was to make it just a permitted accessory use.
Okay, go ahead. Commissioner...
I'd like to speak to the setback issue. And I, I understand the pros and cons. And I want to say why I don't care about the setback requirements and why I don't think it's that big a deal. Right now, many of us have either gone through personally or had, lived in a neighborhood where there's been teardowns, there's been road construction that lasts for several months. These have been temporary inconveniences, as I believe that one house in the front, one temporary structure in the front yard would be an inconvenience also. I consider knowing that, frankly, I, I, I think we're going to have such few of these that the inconveniences are going to be very limited. And I personally think that most people, in, in context of having construction trucks banging around at 7:00 AM to 7:00 at night for several months, would, would be more, I'm trying to, you know, they'd be more okay with their neighbor having a unit in the front yard for their grandmother or their mother who's not, who's ill than they would be with a bunch of teardown trucks or the road construction. So I totally get that is an inconvenience and it is unattractive, but it's not a permanent blight on the neighborhood. And it's a, it's a much, in my opinion, a much lower degradation of the neighborhood than the ones people already are living through. So I'm okay with the setback issue.
So does anyone have any other comments about the exceptions that staff are recommending? Do, is that what you kind of want to hear? Get us feedback on whether or not we would support...
Yeah, some direction as to should we write that in?
Got it, okay.
Setback slot coverage.
Survey versus...
Yes, and survey versus site plan.
Site plan, okay. Go for, start with that.
I just, I just have concerns. If this is something we want to do, and I, I'm, I'm a proponent of it, I just worry if additions we're adding to this make it too difficult or add too much time to the process. It's, you know, it's already too late. And just as an engineer, I, I think this whole anchoring thing needs to really be nailed down. Do these units, no pun intended.
Pretty good.
Do these units, I'm sure, I'm assuming these are manufactured somewhere. So do these units have anchoring devices on elsewhere? Is Minnesota alone here or are these all around the country? And the tornado belt not requiring anchoring? And I mean, if we're talking Minnesota, it's not the structural frosty that we're worried about. It's high winds and all that. So it would be nice to know if some of these units actually have. I've seen hydraulic anchors that, you know, go down and deploy. It'd be nice to just know, is that acceptable already? And why would, you know, you need an engineer's approval to add another step to the process? So, I mean, that kind of anchoring language, it makes it general and vague, but it's another thing that, do we need? I mean, as manufactured by one of these? Or is it as general as this? I just don't want to add too much to getting this to happen. Once you deploy it, I think that's the only, I guess, hiccup in time minus a site plan generation.
Have you seen one of these facilities?
That's manufactured?
Yes.
And it's a pre-manufactured facility?
Yeah.
And it comes with a nameplate on it?
There's a, there's a company that has been making them or has made a couple that's local. I think they're in Brighton. And I spoke at an event that they were part of.
And if we sent them these six things and said, does your building comply with this? What would their answer be?
I don't know about the anchoring, but they would probably say, we'll get an engineer and we'll get it done. I think, I think as far as the anchoring goes, I think our building official was looking for someone to sign off that the anchoring was adequate that was not internal, you know, that the onus was on the property owner. I don't know how comfortable he would be if someone said, well, I'm going to anchor it with, you know, big top tent pegs or something. I don't know what he, what he would say. So that's kind of a discussion that we may have to have with him about that item in particular, because that was really his concern. I mean, that's not addressed at all in the state statute, I don't think.
It's not. It specifically says it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, so, and it doesn't allow it to be on a foundation. So the, the one that I saw, I mean, it's, it's substantial. I mean, it would have to be a tornado to move it. I mean, there's no, you know, straight line winds or anything that are moving. And it's triple axle, it's sided like a house, it's got a bathroom and a tank. And, I mean, they're a, they're a substantial unit. So in layman's, in a layman's view, I don't know what anchoring, how different that would be because of the size and the weight of them.
Commissioner Navarro.
So as I understand it, the city added the requirement for anchoring, the health planning commission added the decision for anchoring to make an improvement on the state statute. This is something that I've heard estimates of two to four units per year for one year of usage. And I think that the way this amendment number one was written, which is really the only change to the structure itself. Everything else is, numbers two through six are basically internal processes or internal rules. Now, having written a lot of things in my life that are supposed to be used legally, sometimes you get into great detail and very prescriptive details about things. And sometimes you just kind of write it a little casually and let it work out. I think, I actually think for the purposes and the amount of usage for this device, that this was written fine. The city wanted to make an improvement over the state by requiring anchoring. The standard the city's requiring is that it be, that the plans be done by a licensed engineer. I think the city feels comfortable that that'll be a sufficient improvement. I would, I'd be cautious about using lots of analysis and time and resources to really get too prescriptive on how much, you know, the level of detail of what we want for approvable anchoring for something that's going to be used two to four times perhaps or zero to four times for a, for a period of one year to protect against. Really, the risks are unusual, too. These are not high occurrence risks. They are, they are somewhat high magnitude risks. I mean, tornadoes are high magnitude, but the, but I'd be cautious about putting too much more resources into analyzing this low occurrence risk and how much detail we want to get into it. That's, that's kind of my higher level view of the anchoring. I think the city made an improvement over the state statute that is reasonable, and I, I think you did a good job.
Commissioner Lee. Okay, I think that this issue, clearly, no one is in disagreement that this is a very noble cause and it's probably very much needed. However, we are the planning commission and we do need to sort of weigh in on the regulatory side of it and the use of the property. I do have concerns that putting something in the front yard when we haven't even tried and identified, you know, how much use is really going to happen, start, at least try it in the backyard first. I mean, there are many ways to go about this. It can always be, continue to be expanded. In addition, other, I don't want to discount, I'm sure a lot of thought went into this by the state, and there are reasons for the, them stating the way it is. I understand our community is a little bit different. Our lot sizes might be a little bit different. And we tend to be a very forward-thinking community. But again, I think that there are some, a lot of thought that went into sort of the state regulations. So I am a little hesitant to deviate from that without having seen at least how this could work with the standards as they are stated now. I, I do believe that there is a use or a need for this. Like I said, I think we all agree with that. I agree with my fellow commissioner about anchoring. Anytime we talk about that, I think we're talking almost permanent foundations with rebar. But I am not an engineer. But it seems to me you can't just chain something and hope that the wind won't pick it up and spill it away. So I also believe that these structures are designed to be temporary and probably sit on a type of pad or foundation that allows it to stay temporary. So once you start getting into having an engineer redesign how it's going to actually meet the ground, I think now we are putting more burden on the city staff. And just as city staff will feel some discomfort in having to go and evict people, so to say, this is going to put a lot more monitoring on their plate. And I'd like to keep it as simple as possible. I think the state has given some thought to what that means. And so I'm leaning more towards looking at the standard in the way that it is. So front yard would be a little tough for me at this point, given the fact that we haven't even tried it. And I would question whether it's just going to be two. I think we've got an aging population, so two a year would be maybe initially. But there are some many, many, many large yards around here and a lot of, like I said, older people.
Commissioner Navarro.
Thank you again. So my understanding of the, the discussion about front yard, and that's obviously not a statutory term, is that there are certain homes, certain lots in Edina where the unit would be inaccessible to get into the backyard. So one, you know, but I, but I hear the concerns about the front yard. And they're real, I get it. What, is there a way to write the statute in such a way that says if the front yard can be used only if the rear is inaccessible? Would that help?
We could do that precisely, yeah. That, that was my thinking. If you physically can't get it to the backyard, it would be allowed in the front.
Otherwise, you have to put it in the backyard.
Right, yep.
But can you see the issues where people would say, I'd have to take out that tree or other things like that? I just, you, you, once you start going down that path, it is a lot to be having to listen to to make determinations. We know how tough it is when we have to look at a variance. And there are so many times where it's, it's existing condition. It is, it was like that to begin with. So we're going to have just as many saying, can't get it in the back. You know, that's, well, there's some difference of opinion. Can you get it in the back or not? So, and I don't think that it's, this city's charged to say that every single person shall have the equal opportunity to put a structure in their backyard.
I, I, I can't debate, I can't disagree with what you're saying, Commissioner Lee. I mean, but I would say that I'd be comfortable with city staff leaving up to their discretion about whether the person's claim about, about access is accurate enough for the amount of uses. I'm comfortable with that.
And, you know, right now, we're just giving them suggestions, so, you know. So I think we could stop our back and forth on this and move on. Go ahead, go ahead. I want you to go ahead.
On the anchoring issue, I guess, just a few thoughts. Was there any discussion of that at the state level? And just considering if the state saw it as sufficient to not have anchors and given that the event of a tornado would likely be equally as detrimental to a regular housing facility where they'd otherwise be living? Or, and also given the nature of the buildings that you described, what specifically warrants Edina needing anchors?
That's basically a question for our building official. That was his, Carrie and I met with him, and he was concerned about it. And that was his input for him to be comfortable with them. So I don't know at the state level how much discussion there was, but obviously it was not included in the statute, so it wasn't deemed to be necessary.
I'd like to just add something to that. I think since that part is not tested and it wasn't considered, I think people aren't really factoring in how much cost and how much time that that could potentially add to getting this thing deployed. I mean, the cost to anchor something that large in a unique way without doing some sort of permanent foundation gets to this, this gray area that now you're paying a lot more and you're waiting for a lot of time to get whatever that is installed. So I, my opinion is to just strike that completely. I know it's not as safe, but it's, it meets the safety requirements, you know, determined by the state already, who's looked into this for who knows how long. You got to remember, no one's grade on their property is flat. So there's going to be some sort of, there's going to be some sort of leveling that goes with this pad or the structure. So now you add this anchoring requirement. I think it's not as easy as just get a, get an engineer to anchor it. I think it's going to cost a lot more and add a lot more time that concerns me to getting this thing deployed as fast as we'd want it to. So just to add.
I'd say based on our direction here, we strike that and we have a discussion with the building official. And if he has a compelling argument, we come back with that. Any thoughts on the survey versus site plan?
I, you know, just my point of view, I'm fine with it being a site plan. I'm fine with your suggested amendment to the lot coverage and the setbacks, too. If we could, and I guess I would just add, if we could, you know, if it's going to be in the front yard. I mean, they're going to have to make a case to you, but I think you should also ask them to, you know, contact neighbors and just make sure everyone knows what's happening, so. And I agree with removing that. Oh, I was saying that I agree with the recommendation to amend it to have it only be a site plan and not a full survey. And that also to not have to require meeting the lot coverage, if that's a not require. And then also with the setbacks to allow, if they can make a case, that it can't go into the rear yard and meet the setbacks. But then I was just adding that they also contact neighbors if it's going to be in the front yard.
That, the contact of the neighbors is in the state statute. You have to notify adjacent property owners.
Oh, beautiful.
So...
Okay, great, thank you. That makes sense. Commissioner Lee.
Could I make a comment about the site plan versus a survey? It would be important to define what a site plan is. One thing we do know about a survey is it will have contours in there, and there is certain standard of care because it's done by a licensed surveyor. I don't believe a site plan requires any licensure to do one. Literally, anyone could...
Right, that's what the point, to not add that cost.
Right. But aside from the cost, I think there is some, some concern about whether it's level, whether that's the right spot, whether, and that is the purpose of a survey. So I, I, back to thinking there is a reason why there should be a survey. And we can't eliminate all costs from this. And I am very, again, sympathetic to a person's situation that we don't want to further burden them. But these are things that, from the planning commission's standpoint, I think that's within our jurisdiction. And we really do need to make sure that things are done well.
Okay, I think you've heard lots of comments. So Carrie, what happens next?
We, we would make some of these revisions and schedule a public hearing probably in a month or so. So maybe your first meeting in June, we hold the public hearing.
Great, okay, thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to our public hearing. And thank you very much for allowing us to have this other agenda item before you. So this is a public hearing for a variance request for the Edina Public Schools at 5701 Normandale Road. Chris? Chris?
Thank you, Chair members of the Planning Commission. This is actually three variances for the Southview Middle School, Independent School District 273. It's for a setback and screening variance for a bus loop on the north side of the Southview Middle School site, and a sign area variance, and all of this is part of the 2015 referendum. What was set out in front of you this evening, though, that did not come in your packet, is a revised sign section of the report that actually corrects how the sign area was calculated for the variance. The sign itself, the design of it, hasn't changed at all, it's just that the applicant, when they measured what the square footage of the sign actually is, they measured it differently than how our code requires it's measured. So, in essence, the 87-square-foot sign is actually 106.2 square feet because the zoning ordinance requires that you measure the sign area wraps around the entire message, and you also include that dead space between the two lines, which there really is no difference in the sign design, it's just how it was measured. Also, the applicant did deliver this evening a traffic study for you. So, the variances that are being requested are for the Southview Middle School. The property in question is located south of Southview Lane and west of Concord Avenue. I think we're all pretty familiar with the site. Currently, the Southview Middle School has a horseshoe driveway along the north side, this is where buses drop off. There's also buses that circulate into the south parking lot, and then parents do drop off and pickup on the west side in the parking lot that's shared by the community center. They also are along Southview Lane on the north side, and then they also do drop off and pickup along the south side. There's a lot of activity going on in the morning when the school starts, and then also in the afternoon when school lets out. So, there's a lot of foot traffic, a lot of kids are walking on the sidewalks, a lot of bike traffic. There's a lot of conflicting maneuvers in terms of children that are walking, riding their bikes, parents pulling up with their cars, buses, the kids then will walk between the cars, also between the buses. So, the purpose behind the variance requests is to modify some of those areas in order to accommodate a safer situation. Now, this is all part of the 2015 referendum. The campus is a very large area that includes the Edina Community Center, Normandale Elementary, Concord Elementary, Southview Middle School, and then also some sports facilities. So, some of those improvements have already been made, if you went by the site or are familiar with the site. Many of those improvements have been implemented, and now they are requesting variances to change that horseshoe driveway into a bus-loading lane. It would require a variance for setback. Currently, the ordinance requires a 20-foot setback from any parking area from a lot line that's adjacent to a street. Because it's considered a loading zone, because it's where the buses would be going, it should be screened with a four-foot screening requirement. They are asking for a variance from that. They would be putting in a low-two-foot retaining wall along the edge of that parking area where the buses would be coming in and leaving. And then on the other side, the sidewalk, very similar to the sidewalk that's currently there, the same width on the other side. There would be a new main entrance on the south side, so that they'll be moving the entrance, the main entrance, to the south side of the building, and that is why they're requesting a sign variance. The new main entry signage would actually be along the east elevation of the building, so that if you're coming along Concord Avenue and looking towards the school, you would see that the main entrance would be identified along that easterly elevation where the new main entrance facing south would be. The traffic for pickup and drop-off would be funneled through the south parking lot. Currently, there are two curb cuts, two driveways to that south parking lot. The northern one would be removed, so all access would be accommodated through the existing south curb-cut area. All of the drop-off pickup would be occurring, the car drop-off pickup would be occurring in the south lot. So, here's some photographs of the maneuvers that currently happen along that north side with the buses, the cars, children crossing the street, between cars and between buses. We have the west parking lot, which services the community center. It also services the middle school. There's drop-off and pickup for both buildings and parking. And then you have the south lot that currently does accommodate some bus parking, drop-off and pickup, and then drop-off and pickup with the autos. So, this is an example of the current signage that is located on the school. This would be the north elevation, identified as Southview Middle School. There's also signage on the west side of the building. There's an existing freestanding sign which would be moved, which conforms to the ordinance requirements. The two wall signs do not. They actually exceed the maximum 24 square feet that's allowed, and schools are only allowed one sign, one wall sign. In this particular situation, you have multiple doors, they now would like to identify that south doorway as their main entrance. They need to do that with larger letters that are facing east, so it can be viewed from Concord Avenue. So, here's a more detailed version of that south area site plan showing you the new Southview Middle School signage that would be affixed to that east elevation, and they would have it right in this location. It would be made of similar materials, it wouldn't be non-illuminated, similar font is what you have on the north side. This gives a rendering of the new south elevation. This is their main entrance, their secure entrance to that building, and this gives you some views, again, of that new north main entrance. So, there were some conclusions and recommendations in that traffic study that was set out for you this evening. The conclusions that were drawn include that the existing conditions where the buses load and the parent drop-off pickup in the south parking lot and the loop on the north side of the building operate at acceptable levels at this time. Under post-construction conditions, they would also operate at acceptable levels. The changes are estimated to shift 75% of the parent drop-off pickup trips to the west parking lot, from the west parking lot to the south lot. The forecasted shift in trips is due to the relocation of that main entrance, so it's all shifting towards that south side. In order to accommodate both entering and exiting traffic, they do recommend that the southern curb cut that would be now the one curb cut along Concord Avenue would be widened, so you have both turn, dedicated turn lanes. And then as part of the planning for the new lot, the traffic study recommends that the development of a traffic management plan detailing how drop-off and pickup and parking activities will occur should be done when fully operational, and this plan should include an education component to communicate changes in that drop-off and pickup location, so parents know prior to the start of the school year how that's going to occur. So, the city engineer has reviewed the application and does support the changes. The plan was slightly modified based on the engineer's review. The traffic study does support the bus loop as well as the improvements to the south parking lot. So, the primary issue are the proposed variances reasonable for the site. Staff does believe the proposal is reasonable. The Southview Middle School site is unique. It is an extensive campus with multiple buildings and functions. The variances for parking area and pickup for the middle school, given the limitations of locating a bus loop near the building, would provide direct access from the street from that north area. A bus loop isn't a typical loading dock situation requiring screening at all times, and is only used for drop-off in the morning and in the evenings for approximately 45 minutes at a time, given their size, they couldn't be properly screened from the property. Student safety and site traffic flow will be dramatically improved by created dedicated separation of spaces. Staff does support improved safety features. Regarding the signage, Edina Sign Code allows for only one wall sign per school building. However, unlike other schools, this middle school is, has numerous entrances, it's also part of a very large campus with multiple buildings, multiple functions that are going on, so it's a necessary signage. We have approved some variances in the past. I think that perhaps our sign code really doesn't adequately address the needs of a campus that size. The proposed sign will provide the necessary identification and assist for wayfinding from Concord Avenue. Staff does support the request, and the site should be developed and maintained in conformance with the plans that were dated April 10th, 2017. And with that, I will stop and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions specifically for Chris at this time? Commissioner Navarro.
Thank you very much, Chris, and I have other questions, but just, just so I can summarize and kind of get my arms around this, the idea for these changes is because the current pickup for kids is considered dangerous, and so this is a way to make a safer pickup for kids, essentially?
Yes.
Okay.
Pickup and drop-off, and the conflict between the buses and the cars, and then the foot traffic, the bike traffic, it's...
Okay, I have other questions for the applicant. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Chris. Would the applicant like to speak?
I'm working on many of these projects with the school district. I think probably the best way to summarize the work at Southview is that you have to put it in context of the entire campus as a whole. One of the things that we know is that while we can train bus drivers where to go, we can't train parents adequately. And so, we're trying to untangle numerous different drop-off points between the buildings. We've already implemented ways to get the Concord parents safely on and off their site by changing where the buses came in and where the parents came into that site. Normandale has their dedicated point, but what we're really dealing with here are the early childhood parents who have to bring their kids into the building, so they're forced to park and enter, and the Southview parents, who are middle school parents, they're dropping off. We're trying to get the Southview parents moved to the south lot and the early childhood parents in that dedicated west lot. We also have to be sensitive to the fact that this is an assembly-load campus, and so we can't diminish the overall number of parking spaces that we have. And with the buses scattered through the site and parents trying to mix in and out, it forces parents to make split-second decisions on, should I cut in front of this bus, should I not cut in front of this bus? And so, we're really feel that by moving the buses to the north side of Southview, it allows us to put them in a stacked configuration as opposed to end-to-end where they take up less square feet overall. There's some confusion from, I think, some of the neighborhood residents who have looked at the plan. The buses do not back up in this scenario, they pull out one right after the other. It puts them in a very safe position at the end of the day for pickup. Overall, we're also trying to clean up some things like how entrance points come into the site near streets like Concord Terrace where it's just slightly offset and causes some confusion as well. And so, overall, we're really trying to improve the flow of the campus by getting a little bit of that separation and compartmentalization to make things work better at the end of the day. The traffic study was done not necessarily from a safety standpoint, but to confirm that, are we making traffic conditions worse from a flow standpoint? And what the study found was, no, actually, it's not going to be a deterioration of what exists currently. And we weren't looking to try and speed up times, we're really trying to get that separation overall. And so, the study was done as a confirmation that we're not making conditions worse.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Lee?
Can you, can you speak a little bit about the pedestrian movements on the bus-loading side? So, my understanding is all buses are now going to pick up on that north side, no buses will be using the south lot, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, I see a couple things listed as new crosswalks and existing crosswalks. I'm assuming there's one-way traffic for the buses, so...
Buses come in from the west and they exit on the east as they come in. Because the buses are angled in, it puts the bus door open in front of the adjacent bus, so there's no need for a student to walk between buses as they come in, and they exit or enter directly from or to the sidewalk as they come in and out of that site. And we're maintaining the sidewalk along Southview in front of the building, so we're not decreasing or losing any of the existing sidewalk space.
So, the sidewalk is shown directly north to the low retaining wall, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, and is there an existing crosswalk right now from, is that called St. Andrew or something, that middle street?
Yes.
That sort of bisects the middle of, there is an existing crosswalk now? So, that will stay?
Correct.
When buses come out of that drop-off, pickup, drop-off, do they ever turn left down Southview?
Possibly.
Okay, so, is that going to be a little tough for that St. Andrew crosswalk area for them to know when students can cross?
When the buses leave, it will be one right after the other, and so it'll be a consecutive process where they leave to help them leave the site faster to alleviate that confusion of, well, is a bus coming or not coming, do I have time to cross? It will be very obvious when you have time.
Okay, so some will be turning left and some will be going right?
Correct. According to the Transportation Director, most of the buses will be turning to the right as they exit or to the east, but there will be some that move to the west.
Okay. And then when you say new crosswalk, what is that actually? Is that, is it, is it going to be paved, pavement marking?
Correct.
All right, so it's, I guess it's, is it, is it to connect, I guess, connect that sidewalk?
Yes.
The sidewalk on the low wall side to the sidewalk next to the building?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
We have a number of walkers in the area around the site for all three of the different educational facilities, and so maintaining safe pathways for them from the neighborhoods where they come in is important.
Any other questions? I just have a quick one. So, you know, if they are at angled, the park, the buses are parking at angle, they do have to back up to get out of their space?
No, they, there's enough turning radius in the front that the first bus leaves, turns out, the second bus follows consecutively right after that, they simply exit straight out of there, no backing up.
Okay.
We've, we've actually used a similar approach in other, what we call urban areas like Duluth, South St. Paul, where we had very restrictive sites, and we found that by creating this curb cut in, it greatly consolidated where the buses were to give our parents more room for drop-off and queuing. Over the years, as we've become more, our bus routes have changed, and our parents have become a little bit more protective, we've found that we have far more drivers than when the buildings were designed in the 50s and 60s, and so we need to accommodate more queuing space for those vehicles for parents, and so that's forced the buses into more and more restrictive areas.
Commissioner Hamilton?
It all makes sense, but did you look at another alternative? It moves what for many of us is kind of the front yard of the school to a parking lot. And so, the question is, although I understand you can't give up any parking, did you look at racking those buses in the, what would that be, the west parking lot?
We did. We looked at both the west and the south in terms of a stacking scenario similar to this. What we found was, by having the office, office Southview where there is no adjacent parking lot, that forces the number of visitors coming in the building to flow into the neighborhood to park on the street, or intuitively, as they approach the site, they want to go where a parking lot is. So, they go to the west and find that door is locked, or they go to the south and find that door is locked. We had conversations with a number of teachers who had applied at the school over the years and said, "Oh, yeah, when I came for my interview, I went to the south lot and found out that I had to walk all the way around the building to the north." So, placing the office and the entry point adjacent to parking seemed like the natural scenario intuitively.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. That, to me, makes perfect sense. The piece that I'm asking you about is, is the bus rack is located now on the north side of the building, and did you look at it on the west side of the building so that it unloads adjacent to the auditorium in a similar file so that it doesn't, we don't pave that new, what is now a fairly... is now a fairly narrow driveway, but mostly lawn?
We did look at it on the west side. Unfortunately, based on the number of district staff onsite, the community center staff and the early childhood, to have the buses come in at that time of day and queue up, we would have to hold half of that lot open. So if the buses had a place to queue up at that time period or be in a, a tow scenario where you'd have to go out at say one o'clock and do an assessment of are there any cars parked in the bus area and do we have to tow those out of the area? And so we're finding that we're actually losing about half of that lot in terms of parking spaces during the day hours to hold it open for buses in a stacked situation at the end of the day.
That stacking end to end, what happens if you rack them the same way as they're twenty degree angle?
It was, it was in a rack scenario, exactly the same layout. And that's to allow the buses enough room to come in from the back and to pull out along the front.
Okay.
Commissioner Navarro?
Thank you. You know, I, I think you make a great presentation on this. I'm not sure I, I'd like to delve into the plan a little bit more from a different angle. I, I mean, I think, I think your written materials, your oral presentation are all good. I hate to sound like a lawyer, but you know, I just mean that very complimentary. One thing you said upfront was the same thing that resonated with me is that the hardest thing to do is to train parents. And I think that is kind of the root cause of this issue here. I do note that after many years, for example, at Concord where there were a lot of issues where essentially what happens is you have enough room in this parking lot at Concord and at Southview, particularly on the west side there, for a parent, for car, two cars to be parallel, one car, you have the classic thing. One, one set of people come in and they wait in line on the right side and then there's another set that they're just busier or whatever and they think they, they're going to cut through and they're going to zip around on the left to everyone and, and you got to look out for them. And that was an issue for, at Concord for many years and I, and I, and they threw a fairly low tech engineering solution and some human management. I think they've improved it significantly and at the high school, I think they have good human management for some of their traffic issues. And I, I actually, after listening to you, I, I think from terms of a, of a construction solution, this might probably be the best construction solution. But I'm wondering, especially this year with, I believe the population at Southview is going to be, this number of students at Southview is going to be going down significantly this year. I'm wondering if we could try some kind of more human solution where perhaps through the use of chicanes and site management, that would be lower cost, whether we could see if that would make an impact before we eliminate the law. Cause I, you know, and put, cause what we are, there, we're putting an impact on the neighbors and I'm just wondering if there's something we can do that would, you know, could try that would effectively manage the parents, perhaps put blocks to eliminate, you know, eliminate zippy from zip and, you know, like even on slide five of Chris's presentation, there was a, there was a picture showing the little traffic arrows through the parking lot. I don't know if you can bring that up. I mean, that, this was kind of, maybe I could demonstrate kind of what I'm thinking. So, yeah, so like if you look on the, on the, the west parking lot, it's on the left side now and there's red arrows and the red arrows show how people are supposed to drive. But I don't know, maybe twenty percent of people don't. They'll come, you know, they'll come through the first red arrow and before they get to the second red arrow, they'll zip, they'll take a left and zip through and they'll wait for their kid right by the, the island there, the second island from the end. And then they'll go to the exit and sometimes I think they even turn right from the left lane. And I'm wondering if there's ways that we can prevent that from occurring perhaps by blocking between all the islands on the far west side and, and perhaps block, you know, blocking at the, you know, the first island so there's only room for one car to go by, the first island on the exit and have people managing the parking lot? I think you get my point. I'm just wondering, you know, I think you did a nice engineering solution. I'm just wondering if you could look at a human solution first, because this year would give us some nice opportunity to try that.
Certainly you can, you can look at human solutions. I think the school district's been trying the human solution for a number of years in terms of trying to correct it. If you go to the site at the end of the day, which pickup is always the worst time of day, drop off, it's staggered. Buses come in at different times and so you never get the full magnitude. At the end of the day, there's seventeen buses that have to stack up queued up in the South lot, mixed in with parents. We also then, because seventeen doesn't accommodate the full number of buses, they're out on Southview, they go into the full horseshoe and out onto the street. So our only option for parents is they either park on Southview or you have kids walking in between the buses to get to them or hopefully they follow the sidewalk, but we know that that's not the case. You get parents that come to the west side and queue up where we'll be mixed in with our early childhood parents or you get parents into the South lot mixed in with those seventeen buses as well. And so just to, the human doesn't separate that bus issue and that's really where we have the problem is we're knitting too many things trying together in that area. They can continue to try and do the training, but I think by separating it out, mixed with training, you actually get a much safer solution. We realize that it's, it's a pretty major move to untangle a lot of these things and don't dispute that, but I do feel that's probably the safest alternative based on the number of activities going on at this campus.
I, I hear you. I can't disagree with what you say. I'm just thinking that this year perhaps with the use of some low tech solutions beyond reconstruction like implementing temporary chicanes at certain times of the day.
I, I think the.
And more onsite management. I was just thinking this would be a good year to try it.
You do bring up a, a good point in that next year we go to twenty-five percent less students onsite. The ninth graders move to the high school campus and so that actually is allowing us to have a much shorter parent pickup loop as well. We're anticipating fewer parents, which makes that South lot a little bit more manageable in terms of a queuing space. So I think we are going to get some of those benefits and like I said, the, the school could continue to try and do the manual training every year, but we're still mixing those two points of traffic. The principal could probably speak better to this than I can because he deals with the parents directly.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for entertaining this variance request. Tim Anderson, Principal, Southview Middle School. My first year at Southview this year and to underscore the points already made, we've tried a number of the human solutions just this year. So I've been out there with the snow and the ice and we've deployed security personnel in lots of different ways and we've seen all sorts of weather conditions and whether it's dark or light and what we seek is an opportunity to structure for success here for safety for kids and, and you know, we'll go from fourteen hundred to a thousand kids every day and we'll reduce on that north side twenty-five percent of the energy field. But the key opportunity here is to structurally limit the intermixing of pedestrian and cars and car and bus traffic. And we've studied it a lot at the site level. So when, when they talk about site personnel supporting this plan, we do. And safety is our first concern in every case and we've, we've looked at the other options and options B, C, and D don't improve us much over what we have now and that's, that's labor intensive from the human side. It requires, you know, we've got three administrators rotating in addition to staff members rotating through in addition to security folks. And we have an opportunity to structure with referendum money now or forever effectively use the human solution. This is the window where we can structure for success for safety for kids. I would invite Assistant Principal Carlson up just to testify to the, the historical human solutions we've tried, because all I've seen is this year. So, Mr. Carlson?
Yeah, thank you for your time. This is my third year at Southview and as Assistant Principal, I really help manage the school day. So really kind of from the time buses and parents start to drop off until they pick up at the end of the day, I feel like that's kind of under my charge. And we have put a lot of efforts into, every year we, you know, we get on the phone with parents, we send out postcards. I personally stand out where parents are not supposed to go in to the current bus loop and I stand with a vest on and a stop sign and a light and parents literally have come within inches of hitting me. We've deployed security at, at every possible area to improve compliance. And when I saw this proposal come forward, I was probably the most excited guy in the room. I've been in a building that had separate bus and family parking, parent drop off. And just to see the way that that flowed, and it all comes down to the safety. I've seen way too many close calls with either car accidents, car on car, student on car. And it, there are times when it can be very scary. So when you see a solution that, that you know will be very effective, we get very excited about that from the student perspective. I've seen some of the other options that, you know, I appreciate the create, creativity of Vaughn and his team with some other options they presented and honestly, they don't look too much better than, than what we currently have. And the solution that's prevent, presented to you tonight, I think will be very effective and I think I trust the team to make it a, a very appealing space too when the, when the, when the buses are not there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Having gone to Southview and was there as a student just a couple of years ago, I can say firsthand that I am very glad to see this type of thing being proposed. At the end of the day, that north lot might be the most chaotic intersection in the city with cyclists and cars and buses and students all. And I can kind of reaffirm what the Vice Principal was saying about lots of close calls happening and I've also seen that. So I think the separation is a good solution and will be immensely beneficial and I'm glad to see something finally being, like something concrete finally being done to solve this problem.
Commissioner Strauss?
As a parent of a sixth grader in Southview, I still do not know where to go. So I'm one of the bad parents. Turning now to the site plan, one of the impetus of this was to improve the entry security for the facility. Is there even an option to do that if you were to retain the north lot as the primary entrance for the school?
We've actually studied that. We had a proposal, but it would have required some significant reworking of the office area. Another aspect to the entire project was at the middle school level, there's, there's really not a whole lot of those social spaces before and after school where students can come in and this creates that bus entry and exit point that creates a student commons in the middle of the building that can be used for educational purposes during the day, but also that social space after school. And so in moving the office to the south, not only do we improve the parking situation, but we create a better secure entry coming in. All visitors have to pass through the office, which will be the district standard once all the projects are complete and so we're able to do that as well.
Any other comments? Great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a public hearing and we're opening the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Could state your name and address and then you get three minutes so you'll see that little light.
Good evening. My name is Ted Davis. I'm a twenty-five year residence of, excuse me, resident of forty-six hundred Concord Terrace. I'm right down the street, so I see the craziness that goes on every day. I do have a concern with the, the variance for screening on the north side and I agree with the commissioners about changing that to a parking lot and I have real heartburn over it. But assuming this is the only way to fix that, there was a gentleman at the neighborhood meeting who talked, he happened to be a bus driver. And he says, you know, the way that's laid out, there's twelve feet from the back of the rear tire of a bus to the bumper. So when they turn, they swing. So that retaining wall that's being mentioned is the sidewalks down low, there's a two-foot retaining wall and then there's the parking lot, is that correct? So that bus could swing and actually hit someone on the sidewalk. So I think there's a safety concern there that has to be addressed. The other is it says there's a, building a screening device or wall will pose a security or supervision concern. I'm not sure quite what that means, but I think the real security issue will be not having a barrier there. We've all been kids and if you're in the winter particularly coming from the north and you have to go two and a half blocks around the building to get to the front door or you can cut across that parking lot with buses, that's where you're going to go. So you need something to prevent that from happening. And the final issue has to do with the sense that this parking lot is, it's about screening buses. It's not about screening buses in my opinion. It's about the, the frontage for the neighborhood. It's a, it's going to become a ninety foot by five hundred foot sea of asphalt and concrete. You're removing a dozen trees. I don't see any going back in. I don't see a stitch of grass. And this is in a time when the environment is critically important. And what are we teaching our kids? We're going to take out all this landscaping and we're going to make it a sea of asphalt. I don't think it teaches the kids what they need to be taught about the environment. So what do we do about it? I think at the very least, there has to be a fence and maybe it's a decorative artistic fence, so it's in addition to the community that shields that bus parking lot from the neighbors that have to drive by it three hundred and sixty-five days a year, twenty-four to seven. It's not just in the morning, it's not just in the afternoon, it's every day. And the other probably better solution is the city's proposing to get rid of the parking on Southview Lane on the south side and they want to turn it into a bike lane. Well, you don't need nine feet for a bike lane. So take some of that, even if you took three feet of that and you move the sidewalk out and you added some planting space, had a higher artistic fence to separate that, seems it would solve the problem. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to speak? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Close the public hearing?
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. So bringing it back to the planning commission, do we have comments? Commissioner Strauss? If you can find a microphone.
Yeah, just it, kind of simply, I, from students, parents and in particular, staff of Southview have found this to be the, the best solution and I find that pretty persuasive. You know, it's sort of, and the gentleman who just spoke, I, I think those are good comments. I would, that wall certainly should be addressed and I think those are, yeah, important points that he made.
I agree. I think the safety issue is paramount, but if we can do it with, you know, things, whether it's a decorative wall or more landscaping, so it's aesthetically more pleasing, that's great, but safety should be the first issue here and I would propose that it makes sense.
Might we ask our applicant to come back and address those issues that are new to us and might be new to them and see if there's a possibility in the, in the void to solve it?
I, I actually, I agree with a lot of what the gentleman said. One of the things that we talked about at our neighborhood meeting with residents in the surrounding area was if we don't have to have parking on Southview, which we're really trying to avoid, we had said if there's no parking there, that may increase the speed of traffic. And by narrowing Southview down with a wider boulevard, it gives us not only a way to help control speed of traffic, but also more green space, a place to put trees back in the front. It shifts it from where it is on the south side of the walk currently to the north side, but it provides you that green space. And so we realize the city does have their, their bike plan in place and, but we think that there's an opportunity to maybe work through that and look for possible solutions. I think that's a great idea. We are replacing the trees in greater quantity than what are being removed on the site. Unfortunately, it just doesn't, we're not able to do it on the north side based on the fact that we don't have enough green space, but that would be a way of providing, a way for us to put the trees on the north side. In terms of the wall, we'd have to take a look at how the buses work, make sure that we're not introducing a safety issue in terms of the bus drivers as well coming in. We do know that, that we don't want to have kids moving in between the buses and sprinting across and I'm not sure that a wall prevents that from happening, but it is something that we'd be open to studying as well. But I, I agree immensely with the comment of looking at Southview and if there aren't opportunities with the boulevard there to gain some of that green space back if we're going to this construction effort.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Navarro?
I, I, I agree with everything that was said. I just want to speak independently to thank the. I just want to speak independently to thank the construction company and the school members for discussing the issues I raised. And I just want to say, I think they dealt with them in a very good manner, very persuasive manner. So I appreciate you, what you, you know, you're addressing my issues. And, and the gentleman that spoke, I also want to thank you. I, I, I think that those are outstanding comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Lee?
So Kerry, what is the possibility of working with the applicant to increase or give them a few more feet there to embellish that low wall area? What I'm, what I'm picturing, I think what we're saying is that there may be some width there that could be given over to possibly more like a boulevard planting. So it's not just a sidewalk than a two-foot wall.
When this first came to staff, that was my thinking as well, is couldn't we get some green space in there? But in, in speaking with engineering, because of the location of the bike lane and the limited space, didn't think that was possible. We could, well, without having engineering staff here, I know that was their concern. You could condition us, and I think part of the discussion too is I think that there was only an opportunity for like a two-foot strip in what can really grow in that two, you know, in that two feet that's going to be significantly green. Kind of that same issue that we've dealt with up at 44th and France with the bank project. So it might be possible to get something very minimal in there, but would it really be an effective screen? Not sure.
Okay, but we could put some condition on there to further that discussion and maybe have a city engineer at least take another look at that.
We could.
And see if it's realistic to give over. Okay. And then I had a, a question for the applicant. What, what, how was the two-foot height determined? Why is it so low? I'm sure there was a reason for that.
Overall, it had to do with not only the radius of the bus and how they come into the site and the ability to clear that wall if they do swing out further than what the wall would be. But some of it too was just the grade drop because the sidewalk is a little bit lower than where the, where the bus lane is based on the topography of the site. So it's just sort of a combination of factors.
So you're saying the wall is a little higher than, than two feet depending on the grade?
Correct.
So...
It's two feet from the bus side.
From the bus side?
Correct.
Okay. So what do you think that, that, from the street side or the residence side?
It varies in height, probably from anywhere from three to four feet.
I think it's probably three feet or less. It kind of includes the sidewalk.
So maybe that wall could actually be lower at the end and then, and then go higher in the middle to provide more of a visual barrier. And that's something to consider. I, I do think that, that residence, that is very residential on the other side.
We intend to make the wall out of the dino stone to try and improve the aesthetics of it. We have looked at the ability of making that a green wall in terms of can we get plantings into it.
That would be nice.
Unfortunately, as we looked at it, we felt that we were probably going to be dealing more with dead plants over the years, which would be more of an eyesore than an effective green wall in that space based on the, the depth of it. And so it's something that we have looked at and considered, but aren't optimistic that it would stay eternally green.
And then the last question I had was, so when the buses are not there, what is that space? Who can use that space? How is that going to be used?
Certainly during events, we know that we've got an assembly load parking issue on that campus in general. So it would be stripes that you could have that for assembly load parking. But during the day, it would not be used by vehicles in that space. It would be a, a drop off point for buses if they're coming to take students off campus for different activities. We do have a space for our special education students from a bus pickup on the south side of the building, so they would be using that side. But for the majority of the day, it would not be used.
Thank you.
Any others? All right, I'm just going to add that I agree that, I think that we should add a condition that they do look at, you know, even though we know, we've done it before, even if it's narrow, I think they, we should work with the engineering department and see what we can gain for some green space. And I'm still looking at potentially that decorative fence and, you know, some of those recommendations. I think those are all really great, adding plantings. Also, I was just going to point out that in the conditions of approval, Chris, I think we should also include meet recommendations of the traffic study. Okay. So if anyone makes a condition, maybe add that, that wasn't part of the staff approval. I think we should make sure that that's applied. Commissioner Bennett?
There's just one comment. One example of a narrow strip of vegetated green space we approved was on near 44th and France, and that was one foot. So I think if we, you know, put the onus on the engineers to accommodate that, I'm sure the design team can think of a lot of solutions with two, if not more, feet. Whether it's using aesthetic fencing with vines or other things, grasses, shrubs. I think, I think it's doable and I think it'd really respect that look during most of the day when there's no buses there. Thank you. One addition. As you mentioned too, I mean, kids are going to dart across there. So if there's buses lined up or buses coming in, to have some sort of fencing, whatever it is greater than two feet, well, prevent, enforce kids to go around. No one's going to be jumping a fence. I mean, some might, but, you know, at least you're encouraging an even more safer opportunity to address that north side and the interface. Thanks. So besides just landscaping, have some actual barrier. Thank you.
I move approval of the variances, subject to the conditions outlined and the findings outlined in this staff memo with two major revisions. First, the, the plan meets the recommendations of the, the traffic study. And the second one is that the applicant and the city work together through the engineering department to identify potential green space, boulevard space, decorative fencing, or anything to soften or improve the north parking lot, especially for the view from the neighbors.
I think so. A second or an amendment? Second? Any discussion?
I think that is definitely something well worth taking the time to do. It was great to hear the residents' feedback on that. And I always like to side for the school district because they understand the issues so, so closely and so clearly. So I think when there's a need expressed, it, it definitely is a need. It's not just a wish. So I think there are, there's room here for improvement. So if you can work together, that'd be great.
Is there a motion? I mean, if there's a motion, is there? Are we ready? Is there a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you. So now we have, I believe we don't have any correspondence or petitions, correct? Chris and Kerry? Okay. So then we'll move to Jimmy or Sheila. You wanted to present on the small area plan for 44th and France.
Yeah, so a couple of things. One, just thought it'd be a good opportunity to kind of fill people in with where we're at and maybe some, well, we can focus on those during our work session. But where we're at now is this coming Monday, we will be kicking things off in the small area plan with the working group that we've all identified and approved. And the consultant team has come up with an agenda. We've met with them and kind of are comfortable with delivering that and the message we want to kind of inspire the, the residents of this group with. And that moves me to the next thing. There's three items that we kind of want to get your collective approval on, just based off of feedback from the staff. First, we identified five members with two alternates, but our plan always was inviting everyone to the meetings because oftentimes someone cancels last minute, so it's hard to get an alternate. So we kind of would want a motion to just adopt those two alternates into the team. So there's seven members. That's part one. Part two is we found out that we made an oversight that the Morninghood Neighborhood Association had several members apply, but none of them were selected to that working group team. So we put the onus on them to select a member amongst each other that we could then add to the seven, making it eight. And that, the name of that person is Lou Miranda. So we would, that would be another part of it. And then the last part, Sheila and I talked with the consultant team and we had the impression that these working group sessions were open to the public. And after talking to some staff, unless it's designated as public or open to the public by us, it's not necessarily that way. And maybe Kerry or Chris could comment on that. There is some difference between it being legally public and all these other requirements you might have for that. But there's something where this would not be legally public, but open for people to come? Maybe you guys could comment on that? I, I'm, I'm new to that. Well, what we'd like to see is if, so specifically in this area, we have like 30 really passionate people that want to get involved. That's too many. But before a huge community event, we don't want those people to be sour and feel left out. So at least a way to just attend and see what's going on if space allows. Not participate unless we have time, but to at least allow it so when we send out the emails saying, sorry, we didn't choose you, could still encourage them and their overall passion. Because we do feel it's very important to keep them as engaged as possible.
Will you answer that, Kerry or Chris? I think we could use the Southdale hallway would do that, where public was always, you know, they're, they're able to come and then we always save time on the agenda for them to speak.
Yep. If it's an open, public meeting, then minutes are required, you know, attendance and a formal agenda for each meeting and it has to be held at a, at a public space.
But it's for like the Southdale Small Area Plan. Did we do that? Was that, was there, there wasn't a formal? We just always allowed? Okay, so we did do that? Okay.
There's a difference between an open meeting and a public meeting. A public meeting means you have to have minutes and post and, you know, very formal agenda.
Right.
An open meeting is anyone can come and that's what we basically did for the Southdale.
Yeah.
And that's what we would be wanting to at least designate and have you guys' blessings and approval on. I, I don't know if we need to do that, but it's just at least something worth discussing, especially for round two and three after this with the next small area plans. It'd be good to kind of identify what works here and... Do you got, do, do you guys have any comments?
Yeah, we would recommend that you voted on adding the three new members as official members. And the other, we can just, you know, we hear that we want to have these meetings as open for people to attend.
Okay.
My only comment again, I guess, because I was involved with the Southdale Small Area Plan, so I keep pulling in kind of our learning, our lessons learned with that. But, you know, it's, it's really easy to keep adding members. And, you know, that's what happened. We were, had a really good working group and then another group said, well, we want to be involved with it too. And it, it, it kind of changed the dynamics a little bit. So I guess we should just be a little careful with how large we want, you know, if we're saying, okay, this is it and, and, you know, not keep expanding that group.
This is it to us. But just, we need to recognize that, you know, that is a major kind of group of people that have influence and really good ideas about how to guide that area. So we, and we just, we made the oversight and already tried to make that better, so...
What's the difference between being a mem, what's the difference to the individual between being a member of the working group versus being a welcomed guest to all the What's, what's the difference?
I guess our, our impression of how we would lead that is we have tasks for the members, homework or other things that we wouldn't put to just the, the attendees. I think you can't really stop anyone from just participating at different times, but it would be set up in a way where, you know, here's the core working group. We make time for people who are here from the public to share their opinions at the end and comments, but...
Is, is there value to having a more limited group for tasks? And I would assume decision-making would also be a difference. I mean, I suppose those are, when you say, when we get too big, decision-making gets difficult. Participation is wonderful, however. So I, I guess what I would suggest on this is I would defer to the two of, me personally, I would defer to the two of you to how, whatever you'd like your size to be. But I would say that's not precedential for any other small area plan, either large or small. I don't, that'd be my take.
Yeah, I would want to make sure we're, we're not setting a precedent that if we say that for the next small area plan, we're going to have seven, we should stick to seven and be mindful of whatever neighborhoods might be out there right up front. In terms of the participation, it worked, it worked really well with the Southdale area. The working group, you know, they are a part of the discussion all the way through the meeting, two hours, three hours. And we would set aside, say, 10 minutes at the end for people who are observing to provide feedback. Some nights it went longer than 10 minutes, but allowing them a little time at the end.
So Kerry, just, so it makes, I just want to repeat what I thought I heard you say. You're saying if we say seven now, we should say seven in the future or?
No.
No, or are you saying the opposite of that?
Well, I'm saying whatever number we decide with in the future, we stick with it.
And each group could have their own number, but you stick with it.
Each group?
We decide for that group, we stick with it.
Right.
Yeah. Now, when we decide tonight affects the 70 of the, yeah, okay.
Right.
Sure.
But yeah, we wouldn't be adding people week to week, month to month. It's eight. It's eight.
Okay. So do we need to vote on this, or say? Okay. So we're going to vote on adding, allowing you to add a representative from Morningside Neighborhood.
And make the alternatives actual.
Oh, right, right, right. Thank you. I thought there was two more.
So, so it'll be a, a team of eight and then the two of us.
Got it. So...
And open meetings.
So moved? Yeah. Do we need to do a, a motion? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
There you go. And what time is it on May 15?
7:00 PM.
7:00 PM.
And you guys are more than welcome to come.
Yeah.
Where will your meetings be in the future? I'm thinking if you really have that much of a turnout, does it change sort of the location of where you can hold your meeting?
Yeah, yeah. I think Chris had some good ideas and we'd like to be close to the area. It's not necessary, but at least if the weather's nice, maybe part of one of them is walking through the area together. So we don't want, it's nice to just be close to there if possible.
Kerry, go ahead.
If I could ask, since the invite is out there to the entire commission and if we have more than five of you there, we need to post it. So if we think we're going to have five, let us know so we can post it tomorrow.
Oh, oh, yeah, these things.
Yeah. So it's five? That's what kicks it in? Because I was thinking about going to... Anyone else? No more? Okay. All right. So I think we're okay.
So we pass invite to two commissioners in front of everyone. So there's less than five, right? You? Joanna and Sheila.
Correct.
Tell Steve we can't come.
And it's, that's not to say that you can't, but we just need to post it.
Be safe, just post it, just in case. I mean, just to allow people to maybe... Is there anything else? Is there a?
Yeah.
Motion to close?
Chair?
Second?
Chair, remember comments? Is that where we are?
Oh, I thought we were doing that with the... Oh, I thought we were doing that with the...
Have you finished that? There has been some discussion about, can we go there?
Oh, yeah.
He was just telling you to use your microphone.
Oh. There's been some discussion about having a board retreat and the purpose of the board retreat might, might be to help us get our arms around the comp plan. And some discussion with the consultants today, what they've suggested is what they were hired to do, update the comp plan. It's not quite in alignment with what City Council is expecting from them in reformulating, reanalyzing, understanding the future for Edina that we can use on, in the Planning Commission and in other places. That it goes beyond some of the areas that they were initially assigned to do. So perhaps one of the issues the retreat might be, should we be able to have one? Should one occur? An opportunity to talk about how we get from where we are to where we're going. One of the things that came up in the comp plan meeting Saturday, no, the Monday night meeting when the, when the Planning Commission sat together, there were three issues that everybody in the Planning Commission said they thought were important. One, that we'd be strategic in what we do. One, that we find a way to put education, teaching and learning in everything that we do. And one, that we have outreach on policy so that we can change and affect things before they get to us. And with a very short discussion, we discovered we have no tools, we have no purview to do any of those things, which the Planning Commission said this is what we think is the most important challenge, charge to our body. So several reasons to get together to think about what that might be and how we might get there from here. So, there you go. Comments, thoughts?
My comment is, is that I think that we're still going to get, the fact that we did those two bridge meetings and the consultants that we worked with are summarizing that, what those points that we all, you know, brought up. And then our consultant for the comp plan is going to take those and put those into the buckets for the comp plan. So they're going to be passed forward and worked into the comp plan. So I don't think we're, I'm not saying that we shouldn't do a retreat. I think that's probably still a good idea, just for us to all get to know each other and do all that, some of the things you said, Jimmy. But I think that my take on doing that whole, those two additional pre-meetings were to kind of look at the big picture, to document that, again, put those into the buckets, how they, where they apply with the comp plan, you know, which ones would drop out because they won't work or, and we're going to allow those big ideas to be brought up throughout the whole comp plan review and update. So I, I think that we are still taking the correct steps and our consultant is still doing what we've asked them to do and is taking into account the big vision. And that, by doing this comp plan update, we are being proactive. That's what we're doing. I guess I don't see what the retreat would be, how we'd have additional policy that we would get into place before we even, you know, adopt a comp plan amendment, but...
I don't think it would be in time for anything. I think it would be long-range planning about the purpose, function and how we work together.
But, yeah, okay. But also, so the focus on those small area plans, that's also one of the big pieces. And that's where, you know, as we, you work with that, one of the first, you know, things you might be working on with Forty-Fourth and France are the, kind of the principles and the vision. And again, we could start applying those, you know, as we see development proposals. So I'm not opposed to, again, the retreat, but I think, I think we are taking the right steps and I think we are taking into account the, the big vision and carrying it through. And so I'm concerned about telling our consultants that, you know, first we said we, you have to do, participate in these big vision, you know, bridge meetings. That veered them off a little bit, too. And now we're back on track with everything that we were supposed to be doing with the comp plan and babbling. You can, you can interject, Carrie, but I think that we, I think we need to stay with what we asked the consultants to do. And we took a lot of time into creating that scope of work and I'm comfortable with that. That's just my thought.
Yes, we have them under contract. The council approved that contract, the work plan. I, it's, you know, we've done the bridge work. That was the extra piece that the council asked us for. They haven't given us any direction to do anything else at this point.
I guess I have a question. I mean, John, I mean, were you thinking, like, I can see some value for an offsite. I mean, I, I'd like to think about it a little bit more, maybe talk about it at our next meeting, but were you thinking that an offsite would require the consultants or were you thinking something, just this people at the table here tonight plus Steve Hobbs? And Carrie and Chris?
I wasn't, I wasn't, I wasn't thinking about it. What I was thinking was, there seems to be a gap here, that we're all doing something we've never done before. This is new to us. We're learning as we go. I think that, I think it was an eye-opener for me when Planning Commission said there were three things that they saw as overarching for them in the, in the comp plan and we were unable to achieve any one of the three because we didn't have the tools to do that in our, not just in the comp plan, but in our daily, in our, in our weekly work here. So the, the other question that might be there might be a question to council, to have them come see us at, at some point and say, "How we doing? Here's where we are, here's where we think we're going." They were the ones that suggested that there needed to be a realignment in the very beginning in the bridging effort and the bridging exercise. Okay, now we've done all these pieces, let's just have a little input and say, "Are we aligned? Are we, are we, are we getting there?"
And so we have established a lot of those touch points.
Yes.
And when is that, like, first one coming up?
June 6th.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we have, I think it's there. I think we've really kind of learned from the last time and there's going to be a lot more connectivity with the council and, and the public. So, I mean, are you, is, is that what you're talking about? I mean, are you comfortable waiting until June 6th to see?
My discomfort may be mine alone. If everybody else who's here is saying they feel very comfortable with, with process and procedure and how we're getting there from here, then, then the issue may be mine. In my, in several sidebars that I've had with folks in, in the last two weeks, I didn't think I was unique. I didn't think I was the only fish that was swimming up that stream, but if I am, that's fine.
Yeah, just a comment. I mean, for me, for me personally, like, like what you said, John, is this is something new for all of us and for me, the farther we get along, the more I, the more I'm realizing how big this is and the potential for it. And I think I felt early on, you know, during the selection process, we're picking out the best consultant to achieve the best update to our plan, to work best with us, to work best with council and get those. And it was, you know, it was that process. I didn't really see myself in that work plan or scope and what, what responsibilities or influence we actually have. I think as I'm learning more, we actually have quite a bit of that influence. And I think I'm just trying to grapple with, what is the magnitude of that and are we going to be able to meet what the council wants or is going to want as we go along the way of really being like aspirational and meeting, you know, taking on bigger challenges with this one than before? Because I feel like the council, from what I've heard about 10 years ago to now, is ready for some of that stuff. And I didn't really feel that when we were in the selection process and first starting this and I think it's just me learning more about that. But that's kind of where I am at, too. I'm, I'm kind of with John, but I, I just don't know. So I, I'm just learning more and I didn't realize maybe that there was as much work for us to do and I guess what level of responsibility or discretion we have with this stuff. I mean, ultimately, it's our charge. We hired consultants to craft it, but that's kind of where I'm at.
If I might recommend that you all spend some time with our current comprehensive plan, reading it, both for content and just, because we've got to remember, the comprehensive plan is a big picture vision from 10,000 feet in the air. We're just kind of, we're not solving the problems, but we're setting the, we're setting the table for the future. So just thinking of it in very broad terms of what we want to accomplish. So maybe that would be helpful?
I think it'd be helpful. I think, and maybe just selfishly, but as a commission, it's, you know, we spend a lot of our time reacting to everything that comes our way. And I think some of that is the policy that's set forth to accommodate just reacting to things all the time, variance for this. And, and that's always going to happen and, and maybe as a commission, we just hope to be more proactive with things and this is our chance. So are there things we can do beyond what the stage was set 10 years ago that can alleviate some of this stuff that we're dealing with now and allow us to actually help plan things?
Yeah, you have to remember, the Planning Commission, that is your main charge as you are reacting to development applications by state statute. And we have the zoning ordinance, that's what we're basing our decisions on. The comprehensive plan makes recommendations for the zoning ordinance. So by our nature, we're 95% reactionary. The comprehensive plan is our, is our one opportunity to really look at the, the big picture.
Well, one, one of the things, as we were talking about the possibility of a retreat, one of the reasons it appealed to me is, I'm fearful that we're, with this new comprehensive plan, that we're aspirational and, you know, we put a lot of work into it and we, it's our chance to be proactive and visionary, but we need to make sure that the City Council is on the same page. And I think one of the, the ideas behind the retreat was, we could have the City Council come in and we could informally talk about, you know, whether we're on the same page soon, but, you know, in the next couple of months or so, before we get close to the end and the same thing happens as last time. Because otherwise, why, I mean, there's no sense in us being very creative and aspirational if it's just going to be changed.
But that's, that's why we're having all these check-ins periodically. So if we come up with an idea that hasn't been brought up before, you know, this is our aspiration, we run that by them. With each of these small area plans, you know, there's going to be check-ins to see is what you're thinking aligning with, with what they may think.
Carrie, when you, when you say the, the Planning Commission is doing its statutory task and being reactive, do you mean that, that the statutes require the Planning Commission to review certain things? Or do you mean that the statutes limit the Planning Commission to only being a review body for these certain things?
By, by state statute, you are required to hold the public hearing for the comprehensive plan. So that kind of puts us in the driver's seat for leading the process. By Edina ordinance, you are to make recommendation on land use applications, rezoning, conditional use permits. You are allowed to take final action on variances like the one we had this evening. But site plan reviews, conditional use permits, rezoning, comprehensive plan amendments, you are required to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the City Council.
For example, do, do the state or the city statutes, just for example, they, do they restrict the Planning Commission from, say, doing, separate from the comp plan, of course, from just doing planning?
Well, again, the, the comprehensive plan is, is your planning. If you want to do a, say, we weren't in a, in a, in the comprehensive plan process, you felt that we needed to do a study of 70th and Cahill, you could make that recommendation to the City Council and they could authorize you to do a planning study. So you might have an idea to, to change the zoning ordinance. We can bring that to the City Council and see if that's something that, that we should study. So ultimately, you're, we're taking our direction from the City Council.
Right. So if the Planning Commission said they wanted to study, for example, the, the ra, the ratio of fast food restaurants in Edina and whether to adjust that, would that be something that would be within their purview? Potentially, that they could propose?
Yes, yep. An example is rooftop dining. That was an issue that the council, a few years back, asked us to address. We come up with a, an ordinance that allows or doesn't allow rooftop dining. But yes, that would be a land use decision.
I was going to say that a lot of that is most formalized through our work plan. And that is why I think there's a lot, should be a lot of thought given to the work plan. We tend to kind of rehash some items that are already on there and approve it, but that is the one ticket for us to kind of set the agenda. And we do that every fall. Is it in the fall? In the fall. Set that, and that has to go before City Council and they have to review it and agree to those items. So there's a spot for new items, there's a spot for ongoing items and things fall off that are completed, so. But I agree that how do you decide, you know, what is a good item for a work plan unless we've had some time to discuss among ourselves? So I'm all for a retreat for that purpose, so.
Great, so, any more discussion? I think we had a motion to, yeah, it was already second. So all in favor? You guys have more? Okay. Yeah, so there already was a...
Can I?
Okay, so, sure.
All right, what's the motion, I'm sorry?
To adjourn?
To...
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye.